Welcome to May 1, City Council Meeting 2023. Call to order, roll call please.
Mayor Webb.
Here.
Mayor Rotam Londo.
Here.
Councilmember Lee Kirill.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Takes us down to the agenda hand. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any dissension, discussion on the agenda? We have an agenda open for public discussion. Open up for public discussion, anybody have any comments, questions of any type?
We'll have the opportunity for the public to ask questions about the budget too, or is, does that need to be?
You will when, you will when we do the formal budget approval. Tonight, you're not adopting, you're simply getting an update from Lacy.
We're going over the whole thing tonight.
Next week, you will adopt it formally.
It's Tuesday.
Pass the resolution and everything else. So this is to give you.
If you do have any questions or preemptive questions that you want to raise, please step up. Once, twice, three times, okay. If not, we'll see you next Tuesday on the questions.
I am glad that, I know that it was advertised and Councilman Luke Londo put on a big blast and invited the entire city to show up to find out about their budget. The Hazelbees have answered that call there, so thank you very much and we look forward to seeing you guys become real budget ambassadors in the community because you're the only two.
Anyways, takes us to the study item FY 2023-24, City of Hazel Park Budget.
Mr. Mayor, before I turn it over to Lacy Christiansen, I want to tell you how grateful I am for all of her extraordinary hard work in putting this budget together. She had to do this, well, we are short-staffed and constantly looking for the mythical assistant for Lacy Christiansen. She has now also taken over the payroll clerk's duties because Sammy's had her babies, so Lacy's been spending some time here and been accomplishing a lot of work. So I am grateful for her for this budget and I want to compliment her and tell her thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
For you, I have given you guys an updated budget, just some minor changes to the general fund and the water and sewer fund. Those are the two that's included in this. Everything else is the same as what you had been sent. And we're presenting a balanced budget this year. You'll see an increase in a few areas. The property taxes, of course, as we continue to see an increase in property tax value throughout the city. And on the expenditure side, you'll see increases for salaries and wages per union contracts that were signed last year. And then there's also related fringe benefit costs that will increase as well, like retirement. There's a small increase in health, healthcare as well, though we've done a great job of maintaining those costs. So the budget increase is not very significant. Otherwise, I'm open to any questions you have as you guys had a chance to go through the budget.
I was just going to say, it might be useful to us, because I tried to find mine from last year, to, just for these, to have last year's to compare it to, because I think also it's a really great tool to like show to a residence, like this is the continuity, you know? I appreciate that.
One thing that she did this year, and I'm really grateful for her to have done this, is this year, we actually broke out the retirement costs per department. And as you can see, literally in police and animal control, 30% of that budget is retirement costs. Again, those are factored in due to the extremely high legacy costs that we have here in the city of Hazel Park. We are basically supporting, we have one active police department and one active fire department, but we are basically supporting three fire departments and three police departments and two DPW, two and a half DPW departments. So it's, being an older community, along with that goes high legacy costs. And thankfully, we were able to successfully lobby the state of Michigan to pass that all-important pension relief bill during the last legislative session. And Lacy was actually up with me and we went into the offices of the key senators in both parties and that bipartisan piece of legislation actually passed. It was one of the wisest and most important actions that any legislature has taken to benefit cities in the last 50 years. So we're very grateful for that. For a city like Hazel Park, that will probably mean, it definitely meant the difference between us moving forward without some kind of a levy to support that millage system. So, I mean, that pension system, pardon me, because it would have been a millage and it would not have been a choice millage, it would have been undoubtedly a judgment levy that the residents would have had to pay. So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That graph that, that the city manager's talking about, right now only has general fund employees. We also have water and sewer employees that we pay for retirement, library, garbage and rubbish. So those ones are not reflected in this, but I'll have another graph showing the total costs, but this is just our general fund retirement costs. We have several other employees that we still have to, or we still are paying for as well.
Yeah.
That will also benefit from that relief.
And we are hopeful that we will see real and genuine relief from this onerous expense in the future. But again, some of that depends on MERS and what they do with their assumptions. Again, the board has, the MERS board has a fiduciary responsibility to ensure the health and safety of the, you know, the statewide pension system that they oversee. And sometimes they change those actuarial assumptions and that's what they did a couple of years ago. And those changes in assumptions resulted in a $1 million increase over a period of two years in the pension costs. So again, those are not costs that you, as a city council, have any control over whatsoever. You're just obligated to pay them.
And to reiterate, if we don't pay them, the state has the right to come in and levy a fee on every property owner in the city.
What will happen is, right, is MERS will initiate a lawsuit and a judge will issue what is called a judgment levy and those costs will be added on to the tax bill of every homeowner in the city of Hazel Park. And again, we want to avoid that from happening and we did everything that we could and thankfully we were successful. And the league did a great job. I've got to give a great deal of credit to a guy named Chris Hackbarth, who used to be head of Legislative Relations for the Michigan Municipal League. That guy is amazing and did a fantastic job with pension relief and he'll be my hero forever for that, so.
I could, I could say too, like props to Lacy and to Ed and the rest of our administration for being able to kind of smush numbers back and forth on, you know, finding resources and finding ways to find the extra funding for that significant increase without us having to go to the, to the citizens and ask for more taxes because we haven't had to and that's a big deal and I don't think people are aware of that. Like we are, we have high taxes, nobody is qualling on that, but we haven't had to raise them because of this extravagant ask from the state that was rather unexpected.
So A+, thank you.
Couple of questions. What is the status of the public safety millage as in, how much longer do we have on that?
The 2.8 is 2025.
Okay.
Right, and that can, right.
That's the, the police.
That's the, that's the small one. That is the police supplementary millage, which again, we can renew now thanks to the state legislature, similar to the way that we renewed the garbage and rubbish fee. So we can do that. And again, I strongly will recommend that be renewed because one thing about that fee is that the tri-county Commerce Center properties, they have to pay that. And there's no, they don't get a break on that for brownfield credits like they do with S'moresa and the other ad valorem millages.
What's the status of S'moresa?
What did we look at, 2030, 2032, I think, we think, we'll get, we'll get you a definitive.
I think it was 17, so I think so, but we did, we're doing.
Just thinking that.
I will be retired.
Maybe. No, you won't. What about the other, like the 14, 14.8 or 15 mil from like 20?
That's operating.
That's operating, so.
Topps.
S'moresa, for the record, for the public at home and for the Hazelbees who actually showed up here to see it in person, I'll explain what S'moresa is. S'moresa is the Southeast Macomb Oakland Regional Services Authority. And what that is, is we created this service sharing with the city of East Point and we did that because we were out of statutory authority to levy any mills. We knew that our residents would pass the millage because they wanted to save their fire department, we had no statutory authority to do that. So creating S'moresa, Steve Bouchain and I came up with it on a napkin at the Olive Garden on Grashit at 10 Mile back in 2014. So again, and both cities passed it thankfully and it served us very well. Now, one thing to remember though is these millages are reduced every year because of the interaction between the Headley Amendment and Proposal A. So if you look at our general fund levy back in 2006, and Andy and Mike Webb will remember this because they were on the council then. We had to go to the voters and do what's called a Headley override to bring those mills back up to 20 mills. And we did that and now the general fund operating millage is 16 mills and change now. So that's reduced every year. Every year, we are cutting taxes, every year for the residents, those rates go down, every year S'moresa goes down, the general fund operating millage goes down, garbage and rubbish millage goes down. So obviously, we're trying to be as responsible as we can, but these are functions of the state tax law. Questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah. Recreation slash seniors feels a little light coming under 400,000, but I assume that doesn't include granting that we've been receiving.
That does not.
Yeah, that's true. Granting's in a different fund.
Do we know approximately how much in grand dollars that we're going to be seeing for recreation this year?
We have a few. I think it's around 400,000 between the couple that we've gotten so far.
We have 200,000 for seniors, 505 for the meeting rooms, 500 for pop-up Hazel.
Yeah, those two though that weren't.
Yeah, there's, right, and there's another one, there's another one in there that you don't have. That's for the building and upgrades and some are upgrades specifically for the county employees that are now going to be stationed in Hazel Park to assist with county recreation programs right here in Hazel Park.
Nice.
So, so there, it's, it's all over in different spots.
Different spots, right.
Right.
The pole barn and such is in the Capital Outlay. The pop-up, I, we don't, I didn't not budget for the pop-up yet because we haven't had enough paperwork.
Right.
Right.
And that has.
But it's nice, it's nice to keep in mind that those aren't reflected in here, so those, that's additional money that's coming to those services, which is great.
And one thing about the pop-up, the pop-up, unlike the pole barn, the pole barn is a done deal. That was voted on, that budget has passed. The pop-up will only be a pop-up if we can get a bipartisan agreement and they pass a budget. If they do a continuing resolution, the pop-up will, will die. So right now, it's in there. Right now, there appears to be agreement and interest in both parties in keeping these community grants going because they like, every member of Congress has decided once again that they do like to hand out earmarks and they have some value and they do. So hopefully they'll pass the budget.
Anybody have any other questions? I got a couple, anybody? Go ahead, Mike. My biggest question is, I'd like to see us have a projection layout for the next five years as to where you believe with the analysis of finances that we had in the last couple of years, where we're going to end up as and how much we're going to lose in revenue and how much we're going to be paying out in the next five years. It's going to be a task.
That's nearly impossible.
But I'm asking, I'm asking you to estimate.
Somewhat accurately, five years is nearly impossible, but I'm happy to try it.
Three years. We can estimate.
Like a challenge.
I just want to estimate, I'm not, we're not holding this as law, but we need to know some ideas of where our numbers are going to be in two, three years so we don't get blindsided by not passing another millage to help shore up the shortcomings before it comes up to us, before it gets to us and we're held, held to that point.
I mean, they do, there are, you know, five-year plans. I've done it back when I was at Plant Moran, five-year projections, but most cities don't do even two-year because things change so significantly.
Right, and that was.
But I, I've kind of felt things are starting to level off a little more.
But, you know, like two years ago, we wouldn't have known about the pension grant.
We couldn't have done anything two years ago.
There's going to be.
It's just things like that, you never know.
There will be.
Legislation, but.
There will be seismic changes, I think, in terms of what happens in Lansing in terms of municipal finance. I think we should probably wait to take a look at that. There's no problem doing projections. I love projections and modeling and everything.
A two-year projection would, I think it would be proper.
If we'd have done projections and modeling back in, you know, 2006 and we'd have listened to, you know, we'd have been bankrupt.
We talked the same way back in 2006. We talked the same way in 2010, 11, whatever. But the point is, we did have some models of a yearly, next year projection and we didn't know we were going to have a big shortcoming in 2010. We did.
Well, we knew that based on what happened in 2000.
And we had to raise up $3 million or cut $3 million bucks real quick.
What, where we were better than everybody else is that you guys in the pension board were smart enough to move to MERS.
Shift it over.
And not, and not invest, as their economist said, in real estate investment trusts.
Gosh.
It'd have lost her.
And I'll never, you guys remember that and you remember it well. And, and I'm glad that we went to MERS. So that shielded us from all that.
Well, MERS has been a consistent system for years, thank God. But otherwise, we really hit the tank.
But projections are valid, especially when you are trying to plan, you know, for any capital, capital needs.
I don't want to be passing a millage unnecessarily in two, in a year.
No, absolutely.
If we don't need to.
Yeah, and I think getting to.
See what I'm saying.
You know, we can.
Revenue.
Right.
You know what I'm saying.
Yeah, and getting to the, to the subtext of the mayor's point, like how well could we withstand a minor correction slash the, the R-word that exists somewhere between what happened in 08, 09 and like 99?
So currently, our values, you know, of course, we may see a dip, you can't.
Tips are going to be.
All that. But currently, our values are actually a little bit low from what they could be. The county is keeping them a little low so as to not shock the values of the city. So we, even if other cities go down, we will still be going up for a couple of years.
Yes.
So we do have a little bit of cushion built in there.
We're still sustainable.
That's like the mayor referenced, back in 2000, everything crashed in 2008, but for us, the, the actual effects hit us like a hammer in 2010.
Three times harder.
Right. Because we still went up for a year because we had that room in the thing and we do now. So can we, we can, you know, and with the, you know, the sale that you guys will approve, the GBA has already approved, that will, we're insulated okay. We have to watch out for our threats to long-term funding streams and stuff like that at the state level that we have to keep an eye on. We constantly scan.
I know, I know there's no way to predict what this is going to do or how things are going to change or whether the numbers are going to change one way or the other, but if we can find a way to prepare ourselves, I think is a better phrase.
Yeah, we'll look at that.
So we can maybe be in that area where, okay, we know this is coming, but we're at least prepared.
We're, we realize that the state, and I don't know if the state realizes it, but everyone is running on a sugar rush of federal monies.
Straight up.
Okay, that sugar rush is going away in the next year and a half and it's going to be a shock to the system. So my hopes are that this legislature will make the important changes they need to make to municipal finance that will help cushion us. So if they could.
Return the state share revenues like you're supposed to.
Return the state share revenues and fix the Headley Prop A interaction to not include the pop-ups. So, because we've already cut the general fund operating millage by a fifth since it was passed in 2006 and restart.
Good question. I wonder if, when you're doing the projections, if you could see what the, the new builds, because the new builds actually add to our bottom line.
Exactly.
They don't act the millage. I wonder what that is possible, you know, we've had the Park 54, there's possibly something going up here at Woodward Heights and John R. and over at the church and.
All of these things, of course, minus the brownfield credits that we had to issue, but even with the issuance of those brownfield credits, the first building that we built over there, even with the brownfield credits, generated more revenue for the city than the racetrack did in property taxes.
260,000 versus 130.
Yep, so.
My, my brain holds on to these weird numbers.
And probably.
So that one will never, I'll never forget.
With less expenses, you know, less resources put towards the property.
Well, again, sooner or later, those brownfield tax credits will expire and they will be on the hook for the entire tax bill and that will help. So again, will they go to the tax tribunal and probably appeal the assessments? Possibly they will, but that will be a rather large boost. Okay, so we're.
In the 54, we have, what, seven years left on that for their tax recapture, the Robinson Town Homes?
Oh yeah, and that's, but that is more of a graduated thing. That phases in more quickly.
75, 50.
Brownfield credits eliminate.
Yep.
Because it goes, it goes in in steps.
Yeah, if everything, if we keep doing, doing the brownfield the right way and to stagger them off.
We had a very, we were, in terms of, in terms of increased taxable value per capita, we were one of the leaders of the county. So it's amazing that little Hazel Park, and we can get that for you, I've got all that data too, I can send you that too.
They held us down for a lot of years.
Well, we're still.
Had to come somewhere.
You know, no, but we really, we really, because of all the development.
Everything that's happened.
Over there. You know, and if they hadn't changed the personal property tax calculation with the machines they have over there.
Well, we'd be.
Oh, we'd be.
We'd be doing a lot better.
It's amazing, so.
But again, that's why you got to get rid of some of these stupid tax systems so you could have further advancement in technology and.
Look, the critics.
And more job creation.
And the critics will say if we, they didn't make some modifications to that, none of this would have been built in Michigan. So, you know, we, I try to be the balance and I think that's the safest way and I wish Lansing would do more of that. But anyways, all in all, this is a balanced budget, it's not a huge increase. Again, we're looking at, you know, 4% raises, you know, that's what the bargaining units have agreed to, that's what we'll probably be recommending for the non-unions and be doing and pretty standard and.
Any other questions for Lacy?
Yeah, does this budget include an additional FTE in the Treasurers Office?
It does not. Not at the moment, no.
Because I'm looking at 22, 23 amended and then requested and it's like a 50% increase year over year.
Part of it, it depends on, so there's an allocation between accounting and treasury and there's also an allocation to the court. So it all just kind of depends on how that allocation works its way out. Actually, Andy asked me about that with the city manager's office because part of that office also gets allocated to the court because obviously part of our job is done for, for that fund.
That makes sense.
Because we do unfortunately have to spend a, you know, a large amount of time, I wanted to generate into profanity, but a large amount of time dealing with the court and with the state of Michigan with the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, which someday I will forgive my wonderful friend Alan Lipton for. That's a lot of work for us.
Yeah, and we.
It's a ton of work for Lacy.
Their accounting, their tax, their.
And for you.
Deposits, we do all of that, yeah.
And basically, that has now, I mean, the city attorney used to be the prosecutor and everything else. Now with MITC, basically, you're basically the prosecutor. Full-time prosecutor. And a man has picked up pretty, a lot of everything else and now code enforcement. So it's like.
Also a significant increase in the senior citizens program, just curious what that is.
We have, it's, again, are you looking at the allocation or are you looking at the total? I mean, sorry, the wages, I can, I can.
Yeah, the appropriations.
We have, we have a few new full-time hires that were previously part-time. We also have some ice arena employees that will be allocated over to the senior division. So that's usually, that's what the increases are.
That's good news.
And a few other part-time hires, but there's also in both major and local streets, there's some allocation for road construction because we're going to be updating some of our side streets and major streets.
Next year.
Definitely.
We're going to try to do a few this year. So we've got some of the really bad ones, Tom will be bringing you something on Tuesday.
Good news.
We've got, we've got fun balance in local and major streets and we need, some of them are so bad in some areas that we got to, we've got to do what we got to do.
Agreed.
And he's looking for ways too to combine concrete and asphalt and things like that to do more. And also, from time to time, we get inquiries from residents about when are you going to finish Woodward Heights? So we're using the county money that we get, that they give us a special appropriation from the County Board of Commissioners every year for local roads and we're using that money to finish Woodward Heights. So we expect to take Woodward Heights this year somewhere past the ice arena, okay? And then finish it probably the following year. And then after that, we're going to start using that money to combine with our local streets fund that we get from the state of Michigan and start making and prioritizing some of the worst side streets in Hazel Park and get them fixed. So, like I said, we're doing Maple Dale right now. That street was very bad and almost kind of turning into a gravel road. So we've got a few other really bad areas. There's a lot that needs to be done on the Batel Highland Corridor there, that's bad. And we're going to try to get some of that done quickly.
I literally have a note, Batel and Highland is terrible with asterisks.
Highland is terrible.
Bad, bad.
Yeah, it's, there are chunks in there that are absolutely terrible.
The only other departure I noticed was a clerk and city manager's office, but I think our, our friend, Mr. Finkley's move can, can more than explain that change, so.
Any other questions? All right, to conclude the study item, move us down to administrative reports, the pension resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is exactly what we were talking about. We want to make sure that we are getting in right away to make sure that we make that application as soon as possible so that we can get the money as fast as we can and then get that money to MERS, which will hopefully over time dramatically decrease our pension contributions. It's still going to be significant, but unless there's a big, you know, change in the actuarial assumptions.
Have a motion?
Move adoption of the resolution to pursue the Protecting Michigan Pension, Michigan Local Pension Program Resolution Number 05-012-23.
Support. Any dissension? Discussion? Motion passes. I am 2% for GBA for sale of property.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the General Building Authority has approved, in principle, subject to the review, the final review of the city attorneys, which there are a few things that we're tweaking in here, the sale of the Hazel Park Ice Arena to Black Bear.
The audience, the audience out there, Black Bear is another company that runs ice arenas professionally and does a very nice job and they are all across the nation.
Now, we still have one payment that will be required to make out of the proceeds from this sale, but this will put the ice arena, make it a privately held entity, it'll put it on the tax roll. And with the agreement that we have reached with them, there are some things that they're going to do for the city of Hazel Park, so we will have some days that the city will be able to use that ice arena and that's written to the agreement. And we expect they will work with our recreation department and they've also committed to continue the Open Skate Program. So what we will have here probably actually is a better.
Resource.
Resource for our residents than what we've had before with us owning it. They're professional ice arena operators. They know how to run an ice arena, okay? I'm a good city manager, Lacy's a really good finance director and deputy city. Lacy's a really good finance director and deputy city manager, and Jared and Jimmy are good administrators, and nobody knows water better than Tim Young. And my attorneys are really smart attorneys, but none of us are ice arena managers.
Well, besides that, we're looking at investing another $3 million after paying it off.
That would be a statement. That's a.
In order to bring it back up to par, and let alone any other incidentals that may come up, which could cost anywhere from 200 to 400,000 more, so, which could put us into the same situation, we had to bond back out for.
There would have to be another bond.
And we'd have continuous, you know, bond payment for that point on.
So, I think this is the wisest course of action.
And we're going to collect probably about as much, you know, in taxes a year off of this property will help offset some of the other costs that we have.
Do we have a projection on the estimated property tax capture?
Around 100.
Ninety-six thousand dollars.
Is that likely to be challenged, or, you know?
No, it's going to go into the purchase agreement. Again, the county actually valued it higher than what we're selling it for, but we agreed to value it at that purchase price and to establish that as its true value in order to make the sale go, because if we didn't, I don't know that we would have been able to close this deal at that level of valuation.
What did the county value it at?
Five.
Five over five?
Mm-hmm.
And no one will.
Not with the 3 million that needs to be invested in.
Not with what needs to be invested in it.
3 million plus.
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought it was five something we discussed at the other meeting. I do have a question about, I was looking for this earlier, and Luke found it for me, the public programming. We had discussed previously that they were going to continue with the open skate days, but I don't see that laid out in here. I don't see that delineated.
It's in there. It's in there. It's in there.
Can you come up here, Amanda?
Best efforts, but.
I read it.
Paragraph 30.
Yeah, it says.
Paragraph 30.
Our copy, three days, but I just wanted to make sure that that was still in the plans and that we were still.
Yes.
Going to make sure that resource was available to our residents, because the great goal of this is that it, it makes it a, it continues to be a resource to our residents, but it improves the quality of the resource to the residents as well.
They also have their own program, bring in trainers, they bring in equipment that they give away. They have a huge charity.
I looked into them. They're great. Yeah, they really help, like, encourage the, the sport to low and underprivileged, low-income and underprivileged communities, too, which I think is awesome.
They intend to do that here.
I love that. Yeah, they're going to go way above and beyond, I think, what they're contractually obligated, this purchase agreement, to do, because they go into communities and become a community partner, at least from what they've pitched, and from what the arenas are that they seem to have taken over.
Yeah, they have a, they have a great website.
They have a great reputation if you contact other cities as well.
Yeah, I mean, we're, because they are.
This is all they.
They are professional arena managers.
Yep.
We will probably end up with more services for our residents with their ownership than we did under our ownership.
Yeah.
I mean, just even ideas that he had when he said, oh, yeah, well, we divide the ice up into threes and we ran it. They know, they, they have this down. He, he owns arenas all over the country.
The, I was going to say, the other great thing about this, too, is I've heard from some of the people that rent our arena about the quality of the ice and complaints about the quality of the ice. So, the great thing about having a professional company own this ice arena is that they're going to improve the quality of those resources. So, hopefully, more people will want to partake in this, in this resource that we have in our community, which means more people coming to our community.
And one of those, one of those issues is a structural issue that, again, would cost us.
Money, yeah, to fix that we don't have.
And they.
Correct.
Because they're a private sector, you know, entity, they have their own resources. He has his own in-house construction crew. They will be able to come in and they'll be able to fix at, you know, probably a quarter to a third of the cost it would cost us to do this, because they know exactly what they're doing. And literally, the whole, you know, the whole floor of one of the ice has to come up and be redone. So, the mayor is correct. This would have been another bond issue. So, I think we're, we're really acting in the best interests of everyone at this point by selling it. So.
Move approval of the, to consent to the GBA, the General Building Authority, to proceed with the sale of the Viking Ice Arena.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Yeah. You're confident that with the gap in appraisal and sale value, that we would end up having to eat another significant amount of money in capital outlay improvements before we subjected this to a broad marketing process for sale?
We haven't had.
I'm trying to figure out how you want me to, or what, are we, broad, you seem.
Are we under, undervaluing at that 2.9 compared to the valuation from the county? Or do we think that that's slightly inflated, or do we think that we would end up eating those costs, making improvements before listing it for sale?
I think.
Don't comment on the inflation for tax. Don't answer that part, that part. Comment on, that's my opinion.
No, I think you're right. And why don't I just, why don't, why don't I answer it and say this? We, because there's one thing in here that we have to change.
Just do not, yeah.
Right. So, we can't talk to you about that. That's, that is the last thing that has to be negotiated in this agreement. But I will tell you this, I'm confident with the way this is written. If they don't change it, we can't close.
Without speaking to the valuation, my understanding from Serene is that there would need to be around $3 million.
Correct.
To make it efficient, have you of the et cetera wanting to, to use it. Now, valuation aside.
And let's just say this, I'll remind you all, when we did the property transfer, because my predecessor, when he built the arena, simply paved over racetrack parking lot for the parking lot and never switched it over to the city of Hazel Park. So, we did a property swap with Ashley Capital. We gave them a street, and they gave us deed to the parking lot that everyone thought was our parking lot. So, as part of that process, we gave Ashley Capital the, well, you get, when you're in Hazel Park, you get creative, okay? And as part of that process, we gave Ashley Capital the right of first refusal to buy this arena. And when, and, yeah, I've got the email. She's like, no, we're not interested. She goes, they're paying what? And I said, just south $3 million? She said, us. She said, really? No, we don't want it.
Right.
Good enough.
There's another thing, too, for everybody else that's not been around that long. We've been, in a nice way, trying to rid ourselves of this albatross since, since its initiation, practically.
The ice arena.
We've, what I'm saying is, we've been looking for people to buy it.
Right.
Forever.
Forever.
I've been on, I've been on team sales since I sell the ice arena, since before I ran for office.
The, the ice arena helped make Andy Licure a councilman, helped make Mike Webb a councilman, and it made me city manager. It was a fiasco. So, again, now, though, maybe this is the light at the end of the tunnel. We'll have a tax revenue stream from this. We'll actually be able to have some, hopefully, some real recreation programs for our citizens, because we're not trying to rent every shred of ice, you know.
To cover, just to cover operating costs, yeah.
Then again, we really don't staff it properly. No, we are not capable of staffing it properly.
We don't have the budget for that.
We are shoring up this ice arena at the tune of 400,000 a year to help make these bond payments, and some years are less, some years are more. I'm just giving an average of 400,000. There's been years that we only did 250,000, and there's been years we've been 600,000.
100, yeah.
There's, it's varied, because we've had a variable, stuck with a variable loan on this thing from the beginning. And then, we had to refinance it because of 2010. Again, when I said we had to find 3 million bucks, we had to find 3 million dollars.
Yeah, we re.
We refinanced it. That's what I.
We refinanced it to save an entire year.
Years of payment of 942,000 in that year, so we could back off and skip a year, and we lengthened the payment out for four more years, or it would have been paid off in 2020. But we did that to help make the difference and protect ourselves through the recession and hold on to what we had so we could weather the storm. And we did very well, I think. Things worked out better than we properly expected.
Yeah. This is a win-win.
I think this, I think this is a win-win to change the projection of what this really started off as 20-some years ago.
I appreciate the context. I don't have anything additional.
Anything else?
Oh, we can talk about that. Obviously, you can see, there's, there's an emotional reaction here.
We've lived a problem, problem here. Any more questions? Motion passes if there's no dissension. Let's go to boards and commissions. Anybody got any suggestions?
No, I know.
Executive, executive session, none?
None.
Motion to adjourn?
Hang on, hang on.
I want to ask Melissa Schwartz if she has any comments, since she hasn't been here for a few meetings.
Aw, thanks, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Hi, everyone. I have no comments. Thank you for all your hard work.
Glad to have you back.
Thank you.
I do want to say thank you to Lacy for all her hard work, the hours spent after hours doing this. I know you're spent hours after here. And it takes a lot to put together a budget as consistent as what Lacy puts together year after year and able to answer our questions on a dime. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, before you adjourn, I just want to remind you all that Michigan's system of municipal finance remains fundamentally broken, although we have hope for some improvement.
Move that we adjourn. Support.
A dissension to adjourning, city manager?
I'm sorry, sir.
Any dissension to adjourning?
Uh, no, I know Alyssa Sullivan has to leave.
I have an appointment.
Thank you. Have a good evening.